...questions, please tell us and we'll do our best to respond to all of them. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your street address. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our business manager, Ms. Sherri Matthews, for her presentation of our second hearing on the budget, public hearing on the budget.
Thank you very much. Presentation is going to be very similar to last week's budget hearing. There are some extra papers if anybody wanted them, but I lumped all the accounts again according to the Massachusetts Department of Early and Secondary Education function numbers, break it down between special education and regular education because that's how I have to do it on my LEA report. So the very first section is our 1,000 series, which is our administration series. That's on this whole entire page, and we do have an increase of 3.39 percent. That 3.39 percent, some of the reasons that kind of stick out, you'll see that on the right-hand side, I have like little numbers to kind of, for footnotes. Some of the things that will stick out is the price of the copiers. We got a new copier in the superintendent's office and one of the other copiers was transferred down to the business office, so we just had to adjust accordingly. There's an increase in the information systems training as well as the conferences. With all the added technology that we added over the last fiscal year, we had to make sure that the technology staff was properly trained to pass along their knowledge to the teachers to help teach them. And the biggest increase on the page is for the network and equipment maintenance. Our Sofos antivirus has a three-year maintenance agreement and it is up at the end of June, so we'll need to renew it. On the next page, we start our 2,000 series, which is our instruction series. Overall, we have an increase of point nine, I'm sorry, 5.9 percent, which you'll see on the next page. What I do want to point out, and I forgot to say, is that it is a negotiating year. So there are no increases in the salaries lines. The only increases you're going to see in those lines are for steps and lanes and not for actual annual increases. There's going to be a separate line that you will see later on that says collective bargaining set aside. So in the 2,000 series, the principal conferences has an increase as more professional development opportunities are becoming available for them. There is a decrease in the media specialist line. It's simply a movement of where the line item resides. We have an integration technology specialist that was listed under a specific school when it's a district-wide position, so I just had to move the funding. There shows a textbook decrease. That's just merely bringing the accounts back to where they were the last year. In the FY '18 budget, there was an increase of at least one of the lower elementary schools for new instructional materials. So they got the materials, we're just bringing them back. Finally, the other decrease in other instructional services is due to a decrease in the field trip transportation. Since we obtained the two multipurpose vans, we've saved a lot in the outside busing. So on this next slide, slide three, this is where you can see the 0.59 percent increase on the top. Then we go into the 3,000 series, which is other student services. We have an increase of 3.74 percent. There is a $250 increase in transportation dues. Shows up there as a 125 percent increase. That is for Mr. David Libby and I, we're both members of Massachusetts Association of Pupil Transportation, and we just added a second membership in there. And there is a 3 percent increase of the resource officers. It's much smaller than in previous years. We now have two full-time resource officers that the district is fully funding, and 3 percent is what the town had, we have set aside. For the 4,000 series, which is operations and maintenance of buildings, we have a 2.34 percent increase. The increase in heating is due to some, the age of some of the buildings. We've had many issues this year with older boilers and with leaks. This number reflects additional contracted services that we need to maintain the buildings. And the increase in grounds and decrease of buildings is just a redistribution of building maintenance contracted services and grounds maintenance contracted services. Some of the grounds expenditures and the vendors were being charged under buildings by mistake. For the 5,000 series, that's our fixed charges. There is a 39.68 percent decrease. This is a somewhat reversal of last year's 61 and a half percent increase. In FY '18, we had 13 retirees, they're going to be retiring, and next year, we only have a projected two as of right now. So that's where the big difference is. So our regular education budget is increased by 1.16 percent, or 356,915. And again, that does not include any set aside for collective bargaining. Next slide, we go to our special education. So in our special education in the 2,000 instructional series, we have an increase of 1.24 percent. And the first thing you're going to see is the increase in dues. Some of you may be aware, we did not get our special education program improvement grant this year, so that did cover some of our memberships, so we had to kind of write them into our LEA budget. There's a decrease in system-wide therapists and an increase in behavior specialists, which wash each other out. The funding was moved to support a BCBA for the lower elementary school and save funding previously that we paid to an outside vendor. In our 3,000 series for transportation, there is a decrease of 2.89 percent. We found a savings in our out-of-district transportation by teaming up with Chelmsford and Billerica and sharing the cost of the vehicles transporting our students. This is a negotiating year, I'm sorry, not negotiating. This is, our out-of-district transportation is up this June, our three-year agreement. We do have a meeting scheduled for this Friday with Chelmsford and Billerica to kind of go over where we're going to go with it. So finally, our out-of-district tuitions. There's a lot of fluctuations between these accounts. It's just a moment in time and where our students lie under the specific line items. There's a 4.91 percent increase in our out-of-district tuitions. The overall special education budget is an increase of 1.77 percent, or $180,662. So if you look at our FY '19 local appropriation budget summary, this is where you're going to see the collective bargaining set aside. That 0.38 should say 100 percent because it is 100 percent more than zero. So I apologize for that. Overall, there's an increase of 3.31 percent, or $1,503,514. This includes level funding, our capital outlay of $314,500 for district-wide instructional needs. Our next page is an overall budget summary, which will match up with the town managers. You'll see a line for his town manager's recommended budget and of $57,344,864, which includes the portion of fixed costs that are handled by the town. Our salaries are $33,388,551, and our operating costs are $13,264,271, with our capital outlay of 3,450. That brings our total local appropriation to $46,967,322. The next slide gives you an idea of where all the non-funded positions within the school district lie. We've broken them down by school and by need. The first line will be funded in FY '19. As previously stated, by decreasing the system-wide therapists, we were able to increase the behavior therapist and support a BCBA for the Dewing Elementary School. As noted last week, I will be adding a grant writer on here, as well as to looking into the future to reduce fees. The fees committee has actually concluded, and we will be coming to a future meeting before fiscal year is over to kind of present to you our findings and what we think we can possibly offer. The rest of the positions on this are under funded positions right now. If funding ever becomes available, the priorities might change based on the student need at that time. Keeping in mind that the non-funded personnel needs, the next three slides give you a four-year capital plan by school. As you can see, in FY '18, we're very blessed to be able to be working with or have completed all the projects with the number in that column. Overall, in FY '18, we received an additional over $1.7 million in funding through town meeting or special town meeting. We're very grateful to the community for supporting our school district needs. And this document is also a work in progress, and we update it, you know, based on our needs and things that come up. So finally, the school department had a meeting with our finance committee last Wednesday on March 14th. During the meeting, I went over this budget and a whole budget booklet that we had. Superintendent Malone and I proceeded to go through a list of the questions asked and answered everything that they had requested. It was a positive meeting, and the finance committee seemed pleased to support the school district budget. The annual town meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 7th, at 7:30 p.m. Besides our fiscal year 2019 budget, we will have an additional warrant article on there for $488,500. $375,000 is going to be for buildings and maintenance, and $113,500 is for technology. There will be a public hearing on warrant articles, which is usually scheduled at the end of April. It hasn't come out yet, the date at the town hall. I will be present at that meeting in case any questions arise regarding the warrant articles. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. As always, you're very thorough. Again, for the public, I'd just like to say, this is a long process. This process started some time ago, where all of our administrators got together, working with our business manager, the collaboration with our town manager, with the board of selectmen, with the finance committee. So this is something that's been long-going. I think we're at the final stages. I think we have a solid, like really, fiscally responsible budget, thanks to all of your hard work. I thought the meeting went great with FinCom. That was actually great that we just recently had that, and it made me feel, you know, really, really good. At any time, people can reach out to us also through the budget process. So at any time, whether you hear something or you see something, you can reach out to anyone on the school committee, as long as our administrators and our business manager. And then, obviously, the one-time expenditures that Ms. Matthews was talking about always happen at town meetings, the annual meeting and the special town meeting, which happened in May and October. And that gives us a great opportunity to get things for our school for one-time expenditures that go outside of our budget. But I do think this is a great budget. I think that we continue to prioritize, do more and less, be really fiscally responsible in keeping the students in mind at all times. So I want to commend you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Again, this was the second hearing, which is great. We'll be going into finalizing that budget in the May meeting. We ask for the community's support. We hope that you come out and that you support the schools and the budget, and it's important that you show up at town meeting to help approve this budget that took such a long time for everybody to collaborate on and really be responsible for the best thing for our district. So at this time, I'd just like to open it up. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Matthews at this time?
No.
Mrs. Bennett?
I'll just make a comment to kind of echo what you said earlier. You did a fabulous job with the FinCom and also putting the whole packet together for us, but they did give you accolades on how well it was put together and how clear it was and transparent. And you were actually able to turn around all their questions with the help of the rest of the district and give them the answers that they were looking for. So thank you once again.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett.
I'm good. Excellent.
As always, thank you so much, Mrs. Matthews, for your job. Well done.
You're welcome. And then, the next meeting in April, I will actually, there will be something on the agenda to actually vote in, the budget, the proposed budget by the school committee.
Okay, great. At this time, I would, just before we conclude, I'd like to see, is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget or the public hearing, have any questions this evening? Because this is a public hearing on our budget proposed for the May town meeting. Okay, not seeing any, which is a great sign. It means we've done such great work these past few months. I would like to close the public hearing. We will be going into regular scheduled meetings just following the public hearing. So this time, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so at this time, we are closing the public hearing. And again, thank you, Mrs. Matthews, for all your hard work.
You're welcome. Tyler.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the March 21st, 2018 school committee meeting. The time now is 7:00 p.m. The March 21st, 2018 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Okay, not seeing any newspapers here tonight. We're going to rely on people to take great pictures and give them to us, so we can get all the great stuff tonight into the newspapers, since no one's present at this time. At this time, I'd like to ask our honored guests, so anyone that we're honoring tonight, to please stand and lead us all in the pledge of allegiance. So anyone that's getting honored tonight, start out with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, benevolent and just as one.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd actually like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for our recognition this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're certainly privileged tonight to have a great array of students joining here this evening from several of our schools, and we're very proud of the accomplishment. Our first recognition tonight is a student from the Trahan School. I'd like to have Mr. Costanaway to please come on up.
Sherri, could you take some good pictures?
And we'd like Abigail McCarthy to join him, and I believe her classroom teacher, Mr. Jacobs, is here as well, so please come on up. And we're so proud that Abigail is here this evening, and she is the winner of the National Geographic B, which is a great opportunity for our students to explore all aspects of geography and to assess that knowledge. And I'd like Ms. Costanaway to talk a little bit more about the project, and Abigail as well.
Yeah, we had another great, great B this year. At the Trahan, all of our fourth grade students participated in the 2018 B back in January. So it started with all six classrooms and all of our students competing together. Our two top students from each classroom went on to our school championship, which we had in the cafeteria and invited our students to come watch. So we had 12 students up on stage answering very difficult questions from not only geography in the United States, but also from geography around the world. And Abigail this year was our school champion. And I do, I say this every year, but it's just really amazing to me when we have fourth graders be our school champion, as they get the same exact questions as the eighth graders do. The National Geographic B is for fourth through eighth graders. It doesn't matter if they're in fourth grade or eighth grade, they get the same exact questions. So it's really great that our Trahan students do so well, and I'm really excited for Abigail winning this year. I do have our classroom teacher, Mr. Horvitz, here, who I know would love to talk a little bit about Abby as a student in his classroom this year.
So I just want to say how proud I am of her to represent my classroom, obviously. But everybody always says, you know, whenever a student's successful, it's a reflection of the teacher. I really can't take all the credit for that. It's really a reflection of the student and all the hard work that she put in, all the perseverance that she put in, and really, all the hard work that she puts in every single day. So as always, I'm just really proud to have her as my student. So thank you.
So we have a proclamation from the school committee to Ms. Abigail McCarthy. I'll read it to you. Resolution of recognition. So whereas the National Geographic Society prepares materials for the annual National Geographic B, a contest designed to inspire students to be curious about the world, and whereas Abigail McCarthy qualified to represent her classroom in the school-wide finals, and whereas on January 23rd, 2018, 12 finalists at the Louise Davy Trahan Elementary School competed in the 2018 National Geographic School B Championship, and whereas Abigail McCarthy was named champion of the 2018 National Geographic School B at the Trahan Elementary School, and whereas Abigail McCarthy distinguishes herself as an excellent student and a member of the student body who upholds the ideals and values of the Trahan Elementary School, and whereas Abigail McCarthy has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and her family, and to the school, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the outstanding achievements of Abigail McCarthy.
Jamie, Jamie, talking for a picture. And then her parents. Jamie, stand to you. Yay, great job.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Great job.
Madam Chair, to continue on recognition, we have a series of three students from the Wynn Middle School. At this time, I'd like Mr. Ware to please come up, and certainly Victoria Pinto to please come up and join Mr. Ware. And this is our eighth grade winner in the National Geographic B. We've talked a little bit about that contest and how important it is, but certainly, at the middle school level, it can be challenging, and some of that directly relates to the curriculum, and it is great opportunities for our students to learn, but I'll let Mr. Ware talk a little bit more about it.
Yes, like the Trahan, we had the entire school, and our school, the seventh and eighth grade compete, and we whittled it down to 10 finalists to represent a team from both grades. And Victoria is victorious, and she recognized that the, I think it was the island of Nita Maroro is in the Pacific. It's the island where they believe Amelia Earhart was in the question, they think she may have crashed, and that was an interesting thing to talk about. So Victoria's a great student at the Wynn Middle School, clearly demonstrated through her performance in the National Geographic B. I know her teacher, Mr. Gadd, is very proud of her. Who's your seventh grade teacher?
Mrs. Grasscamp.
Mrs. Grasscamp, so they gave you some great skills, I'm sure, for your family as well. So congratulations.
That's great.
Good evening, Victoria. On behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee, it's my honor to present this resolution of recognition. Whereas Victoria Pinto was recognized as her academic team champion during the team round of the National Geographic B, and whereas Victoria Pinto represented her academic team during the school-level competition and was awarded first place in the John Wynn Middle School 2018 National Geographic B, and whereas Victoria distinguishes herself as an excellent student and member of the student body who upholds the ideals and values of the John Wynn Middle School, and whereas Victoria Pinto has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to the John Wynn Middle School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of Victoria Pinto. Congratulations.
Have her parents come up, yeah? The whole family, the boys can come up too for the picture. The whole family. Go ahead, right over here.
Hold on, I'll make you a little picture.
Madam Chair, a second student from the Wynn Middle School, Ms. Casey McFadden. If Casey could come on up and stand with Mr. Ware. And Casey is our representative from Tuxbury Public Schools on Project 351. And Project 351 was a great initiative brought in by Governor Deval Patrick and continued by our current governor in regards to explore civics opportunities for students in community service and dedicate those type students to those type values and bring students from across the state on that. But I'll let Mr. Ware talk a little bit more about it.
So Casey, your service day this year was going to be January 13th, and what happened that day?
It was rained out.
Rained out. So they had to reschedule that for the 28th, and they went down into Boston and met with the governor, and been a big forum, and did some service. What were some of the service things that you did that day?
I went to the Martin Luther King Junior School in Dorchester, and I painted some walls around the cafeteria and helped organize some storage products.
Casey's shown volunteerism and great service around Wynn Middle School. She's volunteered in nursing home, and now she's getting together another service project, which is really what the Project 351 pushes, is for them to bring service to the community. And tell them why don't you make a little pitch here for your service project?
So I am doing a clothing drive for Crayons to crayons, which is an organization, it's nonprofit, and it creates care packages for children and teenagers who live in low-income households, and they take clothing, shoes, and like winter jackets, and they put them into packages for the kids. And I will be holding a clothing drive from March 26th to April 6th at the Wynn Middle School.
Very good. So we'd like everyone to support that, and Casey really represents all of these attributes around our school. She's really someone that the kids look up to, and it's a great inspiration for our Wynn Middle School population.
On behalf of the school committee, it's my honor to present this resolution of recognition. Whereas John Wynn Middle School student Casey McFadden was selected to represent Tuxbury as part of the governance project 351, and whereas Casey McFadden participated in Project 351's day of service in Boston on Sunday, January 28th, with more than 300 other Project 351 ambassadors, and whereas Casey consistently demonstrates the ideals of service, compassion, and leadership. She is committed to helping others and in collaborating with the Wynn Middle School Smile Club to complete her service project, and whereas Wynn Middle School student Casey McFadden has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to the Wynn Middle School, to herself, her parents and family, to her teachers, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the wonderful achievement of Casey McFadden. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Casey has a big family. Everybody come on up. Nice picture. Everybody up. We can take some with camera, too. Nice.
Good job, good job. Madam Chair, Mr. Weir appears to be very tired after all this handshaking and talking, so I think we're going to have to provide him some help. And we have, we have great helpers in this, in this community, and some great support from our community agencies, and particularly tonight from Tuxbury VFW Post 8164. We have some great friends of the district, Commander Vinnie Oliver and Mr. Jimmy Williams. If you would come on up and join Mr. Weir, if you would, please. And if we could, please have Brooke Bunyan to come on up and join Mr. Williams, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Weir. And Brooke is Patriot Pen Competition winner, and I'd like the representatives of the VFW maybe to talk a little bit about that competition and its history in Tuxbury.
The national determines the theme. The essay is 300 to 350 words long. We cover the northern half of the Middlesex County, 25 VFW posts. A young lady here came in second out of the whole northern part of the Middlesex District County.
That's good. This is my second year in a row, and standing next to Brooke. Last year, she won first place in the district. This year, she's coming second. And on behalf of the VFW, Tuxbury VFW, we'd like to congratulate you once again, and I'm sure we'll see you again next year.
I think Brooke actually, we usually do this, Mr. Malone, if you don't, I would love you, if you feel comfortable, to read your essay. You brought it tonight, we'd love to hear it.
America's gift to my generation. Out of all the people that arrived at Ellis Island on April of 1914, one of them was my great-grandmother. She took it upon herself to leave all the things she loved to a free life. She knew that with this action, she would encounter many obstacles, but she proceeded to receive America's gift. America's gift to my generation is the same as it was for many previous generations. It is freedom, and for that gift, I am eternally grateful. America didn't always have her freedom. Her citizens earned it for her. Her veterans endured years of sacrifice and hardships so the future generations could have the privilege. Her war wives and nurses helped aid the veterans, whose sacrifices are so greatly appreciated. All veterans have contributed to the gain of America's freedom. Our freedom is getting renewed and protected each day. As an American, I would like to personally thank the many men and women who immersed their lives to provide my generation and many generations before mine with freedom we all appreciate. America is a melting pot of many different cultures and people. Our freedoms entitle each person to express themselves in any appropriate way, and as penned in the First Amendment written by our founding fathers, we are able to have freedom of press, speech, religion, assembly, and petition. We're allowed to express our opinions openly, and we can perform religious ceremonies without being persecuted. We have been granted permission to form a group and spread news willingly throughout our communities without being reprimanded by officials. The freedom gifted to us privileges for people of all cultures, gender, ability, or previous action, the opportunity to begin a new life and be successful. After my great-grandmother arrived in this free land, she became a successful chef. This was an opportunity she would never have received when she lived in her birth country. Due to the freedoms that America gave to her, she was able to help provide for her large family, and without the freedoms that America gives to all of the people who live here, I may never have experienced the life that I currently abide in. I would like to express gratitude toward all of America's veterans for their sacrifice which gave my generation the wonderful gift of freedom.
That was excellent.
Last year, she competed against 315 people throughout the district. This year, there was 674. So the competition, it is getting tough.
No pressure for next year.
Once again, it's my honor to present this on behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee, a resolution of recognition. Whereas Brooke Bunyan, a 7th grade student at the John Wynn Middle School, participated in the Veterans of the Foreign Wars 2017-2018 Patriots Pen Youth Essay Competition, writing on the theme "America's Gift to My Generation." And whereas Brooke submitted her essay to the Tuxbury VFW Post 8164, competing with 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students across the Commonwealth, and whereas Brooke won the post-level competition and placed second at the district level, and whereas Brooke Bunyan has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to herself, her family, to the John Wynn Middle School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Brooke Bunyan. Congratulations.
Yep, picture time. I think, yep. Wait for everybody. Great job, Brooke.
Madam Chair, our final recognition connects directly to Ms. Matthews' previous budget presentation. Certainly, the support of the community to our school district is a priority for us, and many people express it in many ways. We have a group here in town that expresses it very clearly in a fundraising manner that goes to support our schools every day. As you know, one of my priorities coming on was to look at the technology readiness of this school district and provide opportunities for students to interact with technology every day. That would be impossible without this group. And the thoughtfulness and the care they go into, one, raising the money, and then, two, the thoughtfulness they take in looking at the needs of the school district and wanting to apply those funds to where the needs are, is something that we're very proud of, and very proud to be in that relationship. And specifically, we're talking about the Tuxbury Education Foundation. And I'd like their leadership to come up at this point if we could, Ms. Jen Moynihan, Ms. Laura Hume, Ms. Tammy Ministeri, and Ms. Jen Mylesia. And I know they have something with them, but certainly, this is more of a one-way relationship of our gratitude to them for all their support and their dedication to the students of Tuxbury.
Mrs. Bennett, why don't you go up too? Mrs. Bennett's the representative on the School Committee for the Tuxbury Education Foundation.
You probably want to accept the out.
And I don't know, Jen, if you want to talk a little bit about your activities, the auction, and...
I sure do.
All right, Jen.
And I want to thank the School Committee and Mr. Malone for inviting us here tonight. It's always a great opportunity for us to stand up to our town and let us know what we're doing for fundraising. It's also a great opportunity to come here on a night of recognition for these terrific students, because this is why we do fundraising, to prepare our kids for the future, to be able to support our teachers and our schools with financial support, to be able to buy those things for our school system to produce such great students in our community. So our auction was this November, and we have generous businesses in our community, and families, and parents that came out that night, and we are so proud to say that we were able to raise $36,000, which we will give directly back to the seven public schools. And we'd like to present a check tonight to Mr. Malone, so that he can go forth and have Ms. Matthews purchase all those items.
That's great. And we have something for you.
Before I start, I have to say you guys have cut down so much for our community. I know you have a lot of time and effort out of your day, and I know you've been spending it with your families, but I know how hard you worked to make this happen. And $36,000 is just a little token. Over the years, you've raised over $200,000 for the schools itself, so congratulations. But let me read this resolution of recognition on behalf of the entire School Committee. Whereas the Tuxbury Education Foundation hosted the first annual silent and live auction at the Tuxbury Country Club on November 2012, and whereas the sixth annual silent and live auction was held on Friday, November 17, 2017, at the Tuxbury Country Club, raising over $36,000 for 21st century educational tools for the students throughout the Tuxbury Public Schools. And whereas the members of the Tuxbury Education Foundation, President Jen Moynihan, Vice President Laura Hume, Treasurer Tammy Minister, Clerk Jen Mylesia, have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, recognizes the outstanding contribution of the DEF members, Jen, Laura, Tammy, and Jen. Thank you.
Before you, before you ladies go, I just want to say, this is a great organization. And what's great about it is many of us in the community have multiple children throughout the district in different schools, and they always, their time is divided. This is a great organization that gives back to every one of our schools, and they do great things. It's not just the auction, you know, they run the spelling bee that's coming up. Many of you probably have had children that participate in that, you know, they do the book fair. There's so many different things, and they're always thinking of new ideas. These people, we could not live without. It's the same thing as our PACs, but the Tuxbury Education Foundation, to be able to say since 2012 to now, raising over $200,000 for our school is really a big deal. We so appreciate it. We look at our schools and all the technology that's in it. There was one year, you did it for safety and security. Like every year, you work with our administration. Mrs. Bennett's the School Committee rep on that. You're thoughtful, you're careful about what it is that the school needs. You know, we couldn't say enough and thank you. And I know it's a whole, it's a village of people that help, so we want to definitely reach out to all those people. And this is an organization, if you're looking for something to get involved in, it's a feel-good organization, and these are great people to work with. So thank you so, so much for all you do, and we hope that this organization continues to thrive, and whatever we can do to help you, we will do that. So thank you so, so much for everything.
Thank you.
So at this time, because we had so much recognition this evening, we're going to take a quick three-minute break, and that way we can let everybody kind of gradually, unless you'd like to stay and talk about all the things in our school, but I have a feeling some of those kids probably want something special after all this great recognition this evening. I'm not putting any thoughts out there.
Ice cream.
But maybe you could get mom, or dad, or grandma, or grandpa to do something different tonight. But we really appreciate you all coming and celebrating the successes here in Tuxbury, and thank you for having great kids and being able to share them with our district. We appreciate it. So have a good night for those people that leave. Thank you. Are we going to just take a quick break, three minutes, if you just go to the bathroom or something like that? Chris, one more. Welcome back. At this time, there will be no student representative report, as Ms. Morris was here last Wednesday night and gave us the full Tuxbury Middle High School report. She'll be joining us at our next scheduled meeting. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to have a presentation tonight from the high school staff regarding to the Global Competency Certificate. Ms. Vogel is here, as well as Beth Ingrassa. I think to pronounce Beth's last name appropriately, you'd have to pass her class, so I'm going to lay off that for a moment. But I think what I would ask the committee to kind of digest during this presentation, which is very important, is that this is a teacher-driven element within the high school that's had the support of the administration, and to watch small groups of teachers come together and produce alternative means by which for students to learn and to be recognized for their learning is so important. And I think when you hear Beth Ingrassa talk about this project, you can imagine what it's like for our students to be in their class. So I think that's a great opportunity. But with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Vogel.
Thank you. So I'm really excited that we are, we're finally here. So Ingrassa and Beth came to me almost probably over two years ago now with this idea of looking at the Global Competency Certificate that they had read and knew that there were a number of high schools in the area that offered this program, and they thought that this would be such a great way, that we have so many students who travel with us or travel on their own, and who are passionate about languages and, you know, global competency, really, and knowing about the world, that this would be such a great way for us to continue to encourage that, and also to celebrate all those students who do participate in all of the programs that we do offer. So they put together a truly interdisciplinary committee of teachers, and they met very regularly for the last over a year, I would say, and invited me in at the very end, and showed me what their research and what they found, and what they would like to see. And from there, Beth and Ingrassa have really done a lot of the nitty-gritty work to boil down all of the ideas of the committee and put together this wonderful presentation for you. So I give you Ingrassa and Beth to present.
So a few weeks back, first, good evening, thank you for having us. A few weeks back, we gave you a packet with the detailed proposal. For tonight, we just selected the main slides to summarize it all. So first, we would like to let you know that the proposal will start with the class of 2021.
So when we were looking at why we wanted to create the Global Competency Certificate, what we saw in our classrooms and through traveling with students, as Kristen said, and through our experiential learning course, was these students who truly were global citizens, that cared about and made a contribution to the world beyond Tuxbury, and were very understanding and empathetic with other cultures and other perspectives. We really wanted their work to be recognized, their efforts to be recognized.
So who will achieve this certificate? It will be open to our students, but the student that will actually be able to achieve it has a certain profile. It is the student that already feels part of the global community. It is the student that wants to learn more, that wants to see how other people live, and are able to put themselves in their place. Why are we doing this? There were two things that we kept in mind. One is, we want our students to be able to distinguish themselves when they are going through the college application process. That will be something that will give a little bit of an icing on the cupcake. And also for TNS, because it is more things that we can offer our students, more things for when families are deciding, you know, are we going to TNS? Yeah, that's another checkmark that can happen in our favor.
So when we looked at what the requirements for achieving the certificate would be, we took a three-pronged approach. We looked at academic requirements, experiential learning, and community service. So looking for, first, at academic requirements, as I'm sure you've seen already, we are requiring students to take and get good grades in five global electives. So we looked at courses that other schools were accepting as part of their electives and requirements, academic requirements, as well as what we offer in our program of studies, and chose classes that address global issues and/or teach students to think critically about, about global issues and other people's perspectives. So not every course is global in nature, but maybe teaching a student how to think critically, how to understand the other side of the coin, somebody else's perspective. So we've come up with a list of what we currently offer that we feel fits these parameters. This is not an exhaustive list. We imagine that as the program evolves, as we go through the years of doing this, and as students appeal to the committee, to the Global Competency Committee, to accept different courses, as our course materials change, this list will grow as well. This is just a starting point.
One thing that we did find when we were doing the research was that schools were providing the students with a special class. We are calling ours Global Thought Course, and that will be an interdisciplinary class taught by an English and a history teacher, will be a year-long and honors-level class. as students appeal to the committee, to the Global Competency Committee, to accept different courses, as our course materials change, this list will grow as well. This is just a starting point.
One thing that we did find when we were doing the research was that schools were providing the students with a special class. We are calling ours Global Thought Course. And that will be an interdisciplinary class taught by an English and a history teacher. Will be a year-long and honors-level class. The way that, right now, we are envisioning this class is that we'll be following themes. For example, immigration becomes a theme, but it's not the same way that they have been looking at. The idea is to give them different lenses to look at the same theme. Help our students actually learn how to analyze, how to be able to look at the different points of view, different perspectives, be able to express their own in a positive way, taking in consideration that other people will think differently. So, that is something that to come.
And it would culminate in a portfolio-type project, a global citizen portfolio project, where they show their evolution as a global citizen throughout, from starting in freshman year up until senior year. The third, the second branch of this is community service. Thirty hours of community service spread out among no more than two organizations. We want students to become involved in the world outside of their own, and really take the time to build relationships with people in other worlds, other cultures, other worldviews, other situations than their own.
So, basically, that community service cannot be the food banter in Tewksbury. It has to have a relationship with somebody. Learning by experience. As was mentioned, the first place that we have been noticing this growth in our students has been through the travels that we have done with them. But there are several ways that they can be acquiring this kind of global thought. The trips that we do, they are educational in nature. But some families go on trips, or maybe a church mission trip, or Habitat for Humanity. There are lots of things that they can be doing that would also apply. We would be putting together an experiential learning course. You have seen a little bit, like when the kids traveled and they came and showed you, because it could be that you're going to Mexico with your family, but by doing the experiential learning course, now they are not just having fun, but they are starting to pay attention to what they are seeing. I remember being in Costa Rica, driving by, and the kids saying, "Oh, that's a school?" And then, "Why there are bars all over the windows?" It's completely different when you talk about poverty or having crime and different things, and when they see it themselves, and now it's their mind thinking, "Oh, once you go inside the school, the gate closes. The school has bars, so things will be safe inside." It is different. It's a different kind of learning.
So, we, as we went through this process, we recognized that each student is unique, and each student comes with a unique situation, a unique set of strengths, and we want to be able to play to that. This rubric shows that we, it allows for flexibility, for differentiation, and for attainability for these students. So, we waited, we came up with these five different sections, one being an alternative in case something is unattainable for them. They could propose an alternative. Waiting the Senior Portfolio, the Global Portfolio Project, as double, because that's where, really where they're showing their growth, and that's what we want to see the most, is where do they start and where are they ending? You'll see at the top that a student must receive an 11 out of 15 or higher, which is a C average on the rubric. So, it allows for the student who may not have the perfect grades but hits every other mark to still attain this. It allows for that flexibility that some students may need based on their own unique situation.
So, what phase are we in now?
We are currently in Phase 1, and with your blessing, we'll go on to Phase 2, where we will work on the application process, how a student's going to apply, and how they would, if they have a suggestion of another course they'd like to take, or an alternative in that rubric that you'd like to say that they would like to suggest, they could appeal to the Global Competency Committee to have that idea considered.
And we will start, you know, newsletters, the website, everywhere, start to letting people be informed, and the development of the Global Thought Curriculum. So, our intention is really to go out into the other schools and spend a day with them and see the combination of their projects, what it looks like, so we can reflect on that and write our own curriculum starting this coming year.
So, we do see Phase 2 and Phase 3 overlapping to some extent. And then finally, Phase 4. When we researched this with other schools, we saw that it did take quite some time to get to the perfect program. One school took 10 years to really feel that they had come to a solution, a product, that didn't need to be modified that much more. It was, it was what they were looking to have. We see the same thing happening with our program. As new student situations occur, as new appeal processes happen, as we roll this out year after year, the program will evolve, and we will need to change some of the proposal that we've come up with to meet the changing demands of our student population.
That's it.
So, if there's any questions?
Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. Any questions this evening? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. I'm a big fan. When I went through the slides, I think it's great hearing that this was teacher-driven. That's really important to myself, and I know my colleagues up here, that stuff that's in the classroom is now coming from the teachers and having the support of the administration. So, that's great. I'm a big fan of the requirements in this program. Obviously, I like that we're going to be teaching our students to look at maybe something in a different light that they wouldn't normally look at, certainly have respect for others' perspectives and empathy. I think that's important. And I also think the community service is a great component of this. The list was all low, I assume, because you want people getting out of Tewksbury?
Yeah, I mean, there could be a situation, for instance, some of the students, seniors, have worked last year a little bit with our ELL students.
Yep.
This year, there are four students that are doing their senior project with the ELL students. So, I could see how that could be, because those students are really going to get to know somebody that is outside of their little box.
Sure.
So, there could be a possibility, but what you said is exactly what we were thinking in terms, to have them outside Tewksbury.
We did see some other opportunities in Lawrence and, another town that was escaping me, but they were for 18-year-over. So, we didn't put them on the list, though some of our students could do the 18-year-over, their senior year. We didn't add them to the list of suggestions. That's one of the number-one places we foresee kids coming to us and saying, "Hey, can we do this volunteer opportunity?" So, as part of our application process, we're going to say, you know, "Tell us where you want to volunteer or where you are volunteering. We'll see if that matches up with the requirements."
Well, good. And last question, how many students do you think will, will you get in the program when you start?
That's why, see, if, if.
Do you have any idea?
If I were to think of, for example, the graduating class from last year, we would have had at least 15 kids that would have been, without having started, you know, early enough.
Sure.
I think once we start and they know of it, then they can start preparing themselves to be able to put that into their schedule.
Last year, we had 40 students travel with us to Spain. How many are going to Canada?
Canada, we have 36.
So, that's in each year, 40, 30 kids that could be attaining this just from what we're doing in school, that doesn't account for any outside trips or anything like that.
The interest is there.
Though we don't, though we don't see this as being something the entire senior class is going to achieve, because not everybody in the senior class is going to be drawn to this.
Sure.
We've designed it specifically for the kid that feels really called to make a change in the world.
Sure.
We do see that there's a possibility for a decent amount.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Cutlass?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I loved it. I thought it was one of the best programs that we could ever offer. I was thrilled to read this, and I think it's critical at this point in time that we have something like this, especially the climate in our country going in the opposite direction amongst a small element, we hope. But I thought this was tremendous. Every part of it was great.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you guys did that, and I applaud you for doing that, and I think it's wonderful. Thank you very much for bringing that to Tewksbury.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Bennetts?
I definitely echo my colleagues up here. Just had a couple of questions for you. On the five global electives, there doesn't seem to be a grade requirement. Is that something you're going to kind of?
There is. Yes, so if, let me go back to my, my.
I see you have a B or higher for.
Was it in the, in the big one?
I think it took it off.
There have been so many iterations of this presentation. In the global electives, it would have a B or higher.
B as well?
No, sorry, it was a C or higher. A C or higher. Classes like World History, the Literature course, and the Foreign Language, the three, the ones that are actual graduation requirements for all students, like World History, English, and Foreign Language was a B or higher.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the electives was a C or higher.
Okay. And then, I see you have your committee already. Is that the global committee that each student would work with, or is that a different committee that you're going to assemble?
The committee that worked together to start was somebody from each department.
Okay.
The committee going forward, there will be two people from Guidance, Ms. Daniels and Ms. Karen O'Brien. We have the two of us, and.
The English and History teacher that wants to develop the course.
Yes, so that would be good to have, you know.
And.
There's one more.
Oh, no, Sue, Science. Sue Burnett was involved.
Mrs. Burnett?
No, she was, but she's not interested in doing it. So, we're seeing that.
That'll be on the website. I saw that.
There is a good question, because, but that's what it is. See, we need to know this next phase, because then we can see who wants to be together. I mean, the best part is that we do have a history and English teacher that are interested, and they want to develop the curriculum for them.
So, we have at least six people firmly committed to sticking with this, and we're asking anybody that joins us in the committee to stay committed for the next four years, to see it through for the first graduating class, so that we are the ones that are, there's continuity in who's working out the kinks in the program.
And having two people from Guidance is important, because it is difficult for us to answer schedule questions. Schedule questions is very difficult. They have the whole picture, and they are able to advise better than we are.
And are they the ones that'll also hold the portfolio and kind of record how many hours have been done?
We're actually leaving that up to the student. A lot of what's built into here is some student initiative. We feel that it's important for our students, as they're evolving as global citizens, to also be taking responsibility for themselves, as being a global citizen requires quite a bit of responsibility. So, we are going to be asking the students to be keeping track of their own hours, which we will check with them at different intervals. And we are also requiring the students to keep track of which classes they're taking, which ones they need to take, so that they're, that they are taking the initiative and the responsibility on this.
Okay, just one other note. I think, Ms. Grassi, you had said it earlier, I think this gives our students an opportunity to stand out when they do apply. That's one of the number-one things, as I go around visiting colleges with my sons. They are looking for students that just have done something above, just doing well in school, and this is a great, great example that you bring forward. And the other is highlighting TMHS for doing this. You know, again, you, out in the community, people do have other choices, and they are going to try to stay with TMHS if they want something like this. So, thank you very much and your team for putting this together, and keep pushing for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennetts. I think it was a great presentation. We were lucky to be able to read it last time and then obviously get this presentation too. The way you're setting our students up for success, we commend you. This is a great initiative. We always want to be competitive, and again, the high school continues to produce real advantages for our students, and we're really pleased, you know, whether it's coming out of Guidance and now, you know, your committee, you guys are doing some great stuff. So, this is really wonderful for our students. At this time, do you just want us to take a vote so that you can go to the next phase, or should we just vote? I think we support this.
I would ask Madam Chair if we could go out of order, because we have a vote scheduled in Old Business, if we can move that up to now, for a vote to approve the Global Competency Certificate.
Absolutely. And this is for them just to go through all the phases. We're going to vote once in support of this. I think you've proved your case, and this is certainly something that is absolutely wonderful, and I'm really happy that our students are going to have these opportunities. So, thank you and your committee for all the hard work. This is really, really wonderful. We should definitely make an article for the newspapers about this, too. Get the word out there. So, could I, could someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of the Global Competency Certificate to the 2018-2019 Tewksbury Memorial High School Program of Studies as presented.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School Global Competency Certificate. This will require a roll call vote, so anywhere everyone stands. Mrs. Bennetts, any votes?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. It's unanimous. How could we not? This is wonderful. Thank you for all you have worked.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work at Tewksbury Memorial High School. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I asked you to just stay for a few minutes, just in case. We wanted to open it up. Mr. Malone had pointed out to see if there were any questions, if anyone had any questions, if we take out our business under Old Business, the sale of leadership halfway in programs. Was that, did anyone have any questions on that presentation before they leave this evening? I know I did not. Did anyone else? Again, great stuff again, so we have no questions, but thank you again. Have a wonderful night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, moving right along in our agenda this evening, Citizens Forum is next. Does anyone wish to speak on anything on the agenda this evening? Not seeing anyone present at this time. We did have a full house about 10 minutes ago, so not seeing anybody. We're going to move right on to our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, who will present our meeting minutes.
Yes, I'd like to move the, actually, there's no minutes this evening. Sorry. I had myself there.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. So, we'll move right over to our payroll.
The payroll. I would like to now move the school department payroll for the period ending 3/8/2018 to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories are shown for a total amount of $1,374,420.94.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to approve the payroll period ending March 8, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Malone for our superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I'd like to discuss is a big item. I certainly want to discuss our current status with the weather and the amount of days missed. Certainly, this is a very big topic amongst all superintendents, amongst all communities, throughout the state. It's a topic that's certainly alive in the newspapers, and many districts are struggling on how to adapt to this, specifically in Tewksbury. As all schools and messages, we're required to go 180 days with students. We're also required to build into our schedule five additional days in case of snow. With those five additional days in case of snow, that would bring us to an end date of June 21st. We have had three additional days for a total of eight of snow days so far. That would bring our last day of school to Tuesday, June 26th. Certainly, it would be remiss of me not to mention the fact that we have a weather event happening tonight, so we don't know where that will leave us going forward. But having researched a lot of opportunities that other districts are engaging in, talking to a lot of superintendents, but certainly hearing a lot from our parents in the community, hearing a great deal from our staff about what the options are and what we might be able to do, we've looked at many options. Many people have had concern about the June 26 date in relation to vacations and the warm weather, and these are all valid issues. I'm not sure they're issues we would look at to changing that date. One of the strongest issues that's been presented, and one that I have concerns about, is if there is a way we could better serve our students by providing a better and more high-quality educational opportunity, that might be a better option than being in a classroom on June 26th, I think is something we should be open to. One of those options that many other districts have chosen to take advantage of, and we are currently looking at, is the option of going to school on Good Friday, which is March 30th. Currently, that is scheduled as a non-school day and a non-work day. I have communicated with all of our unions and all of our non-union personnel. We have received favorable feedback from the unions as far as their ability to staff our schools if we make a determination that, in fact, March 30th would become a day of school. It would be an early release day for students and an early release day for staff. There are some barriers. I've heard from a great deal of staff, interest in that. We would have to be certainly understanding of those individuals who observe that day as a religious holiday, and certainly would not want to impede anyone, whether a student, a faculty member, in their ability to do that. Also, there may be situations out there with limited notice, that people may have travel plans or other activities that may not be able to be rescheduled. And we'll. And we'll certainly have to consider those issues and work with those individuals if that's the case. The one drawback in moving forward with going to school on Good Friday would be the concern that we've always valued messaging out to parents and getting parent input before making major decisions, particularly around schedules of school or changes in activities for students. So I am concerned about that. I have heard from several parents via email suggesting this opportunity. But typically, in any event that would affect families and students and parents in this manner, we would want to message out, get feedback, have more of an opportunity to have dialogue around this. Unfortunately, because of the number of days we've recently had of snow days and the fact that changing the date would require a school committee vote and the need to make sure that the workforce would be available to even consider this decision, which really didn't come to fruition until late today, has limited our ability in really messaging out and receiving feedback from families. So in presenting this to the school committee, I certainly openly apologize to families and the community member for not getting their full input on this. And certainly, in presenting this to the school committee, I'm trying to balance out our deep and core value that we want to message with parents, we want their input, in trying to think about an immediate decision that may be in the best interest of students. So again, I apologize for that. But I do believe as part of a multi-step solution that going to school, changing our schedule and having an early release day on Friday, March 30th, would provide more in-depth opportunities to continue quality instruction for students versus a day of school on June 26th. That, if the committee entertained that option and voted on to approve that, that would bring us from June 26th, last day of school, to June 25th, which is a Monday. If we looked at the June 25th date through the same lens, we just looked at the June 26th date, we would certainly be open to opportunities that might provide better educational opportunities for our students and be more conducive to learning for our students, again, rather than having the last day of school on a Monday. So we are working in conjunction with our teachers and all of our unions to explore alternative learning opportunities that could include project-based learning opportunities that we collaboratively work with teachers to develop for students, for them to demonstrate their learning over a period of time that the state would allow us to give credit for a school day. It's very much in the initial stages. We haven't finalized any thoughts. It would likely, if we pursued that further beyond tonight, require extensive work with the teachers, most likely require a memorandum of understanding with the unions and require a school committee vote. And obviously, we would want to hear parent feedback and parent input on that as well. So it is a two-tiered approach that if we can provide a better quality experience for our students, it's something we certainly want to explore. The first part of that would be to examine that Good Friday holiday and now make that a school day. Again, it is a time-sensitive decision. It would have to be voted on this evening and we would have to message out as soon as possible tomorrow to make families aware of this. The workforce in the district has been aware we've been thinking about this and we've received their input, and some of that has taken longer than others. But we're confident that that's where we're at. So I would ask the committee to entertain the possibility of voting and changing the school calendar to include making March 30th now, which is previously understood to be a holiday, as in Good Friday, and change that to a early-release school day to count towards our 180 total.
Mr. Malone, we just want to thank you. This is not something that happens overnight. We know you've been working on this. We know you've been watching very closely the 180 days and, you know, how best. What I really love, and I think we all really love, is that for you, it's always about what's best for students, always about quality education. So whenever someone makes a decision and that's their main reason, it's very easy to get behind and support that. We thank you for all your work. We know you've been working with the TTA leadership. We know you've been working with all of the different unions within the district. This is not something that is very easily done. People think it's sometimes a switch. There's so many moving parts and your attention to detail in this. I know that you've had an opportunity to kind of speak with everyone. It does affect different units in a different way and we certainly appreciate all the extra time. You've exhausted, again, this was time-sensitive, so there was a lot of work that had to be done very quickly. We appreciate the collaboration that you've worked with all our unions on that. I think this is really a great solution to a problem, as you said. Many districts are facing the same solution, I mean, the same problem. And I think this is, even though it's a two-tiered approach, I think this first one is moving in the right direction. So I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions before we take it to a vote, but I would like someone to make a motion because I think it's important that we vote on this this evening. Again, what's most important is to communicate and message out to our families if this was to, the vote was to succeed tonight. So I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. I mean, this is an important discussion because we are changing the calendar and it does impact families, impacts our staff, our students.
My only question, Superintendent, is that we have obviously all the staff on board if we do make the decision to...
We have a, we have a commitment from the unions. We have not specifically gone down and done a person by person. I think what we've tried to, what we'll have to apply is a common sense approach to those staff members who would be observing that religious day and those staff members who might have prior travel plans that they can't change or something of that nature. Again, we don't have a specific number, but the feedback we have from the unions with those would be very much individual situations that hopefully we'd be able to manage effectively.
Sure. So we can properly staff all of that?
That is our first and main concern. And I would say I'm very comfortable, after speaking to the unions, that they are on board with supporting that. Again, I don't have a specific number, but I'm...
Yeah, sure, that's right.
Pretty confident that that was one of our main issues to make sure if we were going to bring students here, that we were going to have a safe and valuable learning experience for students and make sure that if we're going to make a decision based on learning, that that's going to be a quality learning environment for students. So I feel that the confidence that the unions and teachers and the emails and other things like that have presented to me, I'm feeling very hopeful that we can meet that. And again, this is also a test of our district to look at long-term, how we respond to these issues and how we communicate and how we work together. So it's taken a lot of work to get this far. I'm sure it's not going to be perfect, no matter what we do. But we're in a bit, and I apologize for putting the committee in this position, that it's a bit time-sensitive. If we're gonna make a decision of this nature, we would have to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Bennett?
And I think you've kind of addressed this a little bit, but maybe for the public as well is the student. So if there's a religious need, that the student can't attend school for Good Friday or they've got some other commitment, we'll be understanding of that going forward. I know we haven't been able to get all the feedback from parents.
Right.
What we've seen, at least in social media, has been there's a large outcry to do that.
Right.
To get rid of Good Friday and, you know, lessen the impact in June. So I'm assuming the district would work with students and parents.
We would. We would anticipate, particularly with families not being involved, and this thinking's only been going on for less than a week. So, but this is going to be new for families to hear. So we are certainly committed to working with families if that's the situation. I don't think, because of the timing of it and because of a bit of uncertainty around it, I'm not sure there's a blanket statement to cover that, other than to say that there could be a multitude of reasons that families may need our help in navigating this and certainly that's what we're here to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Cutlass?
Yeah, I think Mr. Malone did a great job in a short period of time and I think it's the right thing to do. And I'll make a motion to make March 30th Friday a school day and early-release school day.
And I'll second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to add March 30th, Good Friday, as an early release, early-release day for the district. This requires a roll call vote. Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. So I guess the only thing that I would like to say, Mr. Malone, is that it is important that we message out, again, I appreciate your honesty and, you know, even to extend an apology to families on such short notice. This is something that is in the best interest of students and is promoting quality education. So I just suggest, you know, we get emails out, we contact the newspapers, we get it up on all the websites and maybe all our administrators, make sure they include it in their weekly or bi-weekly or monthly message, you know, get that message out to everyone. I think you can't hear it enough because parents are so busy and so we always hear that. And so the more places we can get the message out, the better off we'll be. But thank you again for bringing that up. I think it's a step in the right direction, so we appreciate you had work on that.
Madam Chair, a few other items. If, in our last meeting, we had talked a bit about a scheduled student event at the high school revolving around the student walkout in support of the violent actions in Florida. And we actually had the last Thursday, the middle school did an observance of that with a moment of silence and a few other elements. The high school students, again, this was a student-run activity, student-centered activity. Staff roles in this were simply to support movement of students and to certainly make sure we had a safe environment. The students at the high school did a fantastic job of messaging back to the high school administration that they wanted to reschedule for today. They were able to do that and today at 10:00 a.m., there was an observance here out in front of the high school where students led an observance in a moment of silence to remember the 17 students lost in Florida. Staff members were present to make sure it was a safe environment. It was not a political event in any way. It was a way for students to show their support of the students in Florida. It was a rather somber event. They adhered to the 17-minute criteria on the event and it ended exactly at 10:17. It went very safely. Somewhere between approximately half and two-thirds of the students in the high school participated. It was not mandatory, it was completely student choice. But it's a great example of our students' ability to organize, solicit input and feedback from the leadership and manage an event that's pretty moving, non-political, and kind of get those events on the forefront. And it's a great way for us to see civics in action. So we're proud of the students who were involved in that event and we're supportive of the students who chose not to be part of it. And it's just a great way that we were happy to show, let our students show their support. Just a notification to parents in the committee. If you remember, we had a presentation from the ACE curriculum from the Special Education Department. We had at least one cancellation. We might be in our second due to snow of a community presentation and parent presentation on this. There was another one scheduled for tonight. Unfortunately, the presenter has a health issue that would be exasperated by the snow. So we are going to put together an online version of that and provide another opportunity for parent feedback and community feedback as far as that. You've all seen it here in the school committee and had that presentation, but we want to make sure we have appropriate parent and community feedback before we move forward on that. Our continued look at security continues. Ms. Matthews, Monday, took around a vendor to look at all of our vestibules in all of our schools to get some quotes and options about how to upgrade the security of those vestibules. That's a continued effort. We'll be bringing in other vendors. We'll be working with the town on a formal security assessment of those entryways and we can continue to look at the physical security of our buildings. We continue to look at our procedures. We're continuing to look at opportunities. We can create, increase human security, particularly here at the high school, and lessen any opportunities where doors might be, entry doors might be unlocked for any reason. So we have some maneuvers we need to make personnel-wise to make sure that can happen, but it is certainly our goal to get that done as soon as possible. And today, we conducted several Alice drills throughout the district in multiple schools and had some terrific feedback from police and fire who were present during this. And we continue to drill with our students, to continue to learn from all the work we're doing in that area and certainly continue to try to make sure that all of our students are safe at all times. A reminder that on April 25th, the Day on the Hill event will occur again, which is a great opportunity for our school committee and for our students in the high school. I've talked to Principal Vogel. We're gonna try to expand that opportunity for even more students at the high school and get some civically-minded teachers and students to attend with school committee members to the State House. That's a great event and a great opportunity for our students to see our legislators at Spent Sunday morning at the Boston Garden, and that was not to see the Boston Brewers. That was to see our own Tewksbury Methuen Red Ranger women's hockey team. Put out a fantastic effort in a very tight 1-0 loss. And we will have opportunities in this meeting to recognize those student athletes and their coaches and their, you know, all those things they went through. The great piece that you could pull away from that was the community support, the staff support, the amount of people there from Tewksbury to cheer on our team. And that just means so much in a town like ours. So it's great when we have a team like that that can pull us together and bring many people there. You know, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Cutlass were there as well, and that's, that's just great to see. And what a great event for our school district. We'll talk a lot more about the girl, young ladies on that team in meetings to come, but it's, it's just a great event for our school district. And also hats off to Ms. Matthews and Ms. Mugford from Food Services, who were involved in a presentation at the Masbo Conference yesterday, which highlighted the strong communication between food services and district leadership in the promotion of food services in all districts. And they were both great representatives of our school district in a very highly-attended event out in Marlboro yesterday. So hats off to them and again, a great reflection on everything that's going on in Tewksbury. With that, I'll hand that over to Ms. Matthews.
What Mr. Malone didn't say is he was also part of the same presentation that he had yesterday. He left that part out. Just to piggyback on the security, we did set up today an additional audit for the cameras. Not here at the high school because we have a company already doing an audit on that. It's just an audit to the other six schools, kind of look at the cameras and make sure that we have everything proper where we're supposed to have it. And the only other thing I have tonight is each year Powers and Sullivan or an outside auditing company comes in and audits my end-of-the-year reports that we have to submit. And I'm very happy to report for the second year in a row, we got the reports back yesterday and there are no findings. So everything went through fine. And we have another year with perfect, perfect record-keeping.
Yay!
That's good.
That's about all I have to report.
Well, that's a great reflection of you, Ms. Matthews, and your great, strong business practices here in the district, so thank you.
I think it's a team effort.
Consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off our consent agenda this evening? If not seeing any, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to accept the consent agenda this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Cutlass, Elementary School Building Committee?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam Chair, we meet, as Mr. Francis would say, every first and third Thursday. On March 27th at 6:00 at the Trahan School, there's gonna be an open meeting for any member of the community that wants to come and have input into this building project. As you know, we're looking at three various options... As you know, we're looking at three various options, 250-student school, a 550, and a 750-student school to cover grades 2 through 4. So at 6:00 at the Trahan School on Tuesday, March 27th, we invite any member of the public to come, parents, students, grandparents, and give input to the committee as to what they would like to see.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mr. Malone, would you like to add anything?
And just on top of Mr. Cutlass, these posters, you'll see a lot of these. We've had some posters made that are in town offices, churches, and we've sent these out as flyers to parents and also to abutters of any of the areas that we're looking that are possible sites for the school. But again, it's a first in a series of community meetings to get community input. I believe that time is 6:30 on the 27th, so we look forward to that. Again, we will have others. And also, our next building committee meeting is on April 5th, and we have changed the location of that to the Ryan School. And the reason for that is we have sent out a mailing to some of the abutters for any of the sites. So we're attempting to locate some of our future building committee meetings nearer to the sites where we're looking at to, if the abutters would like to attend or have information, we'd like to invite them in to do it at that time.
That's a great idea. Thank you for the update.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Is that also going to be communicated out in the papers at all?
We can, that's a great idea. We can put it out in the papers. We've put it on our website, we'll put it out in other ways, but that's, excuse me, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Tewksbury Education Foundation?
As we saw this evening, earlier this evening, the recognition for them. The only other thing, again, I'll mention, the Spelling Bee is coming up June 11th and 12th later in the year, and they are working with Ms. Matthews to allocate the $36,000 that was given tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yay! Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Wellness Committee, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, so the Wellness Committee met on Monday. The mandated training from the state with regards to the 7th and the 9th grade is underway. That is the screening about drugs and alcohol. As of Monday, the 9th grade was completely done. Out of 212 students, 192 were screened. We only had a couple that opted out, which you're certainly entitled to do either as a student or a parent. And there was only a few positives, and obviously, they were referred to appropriate services or help where they needed it. So March is National Nutrition Month. As such, the nurses have been having a March madness in the schools. They've been in the classrooms to discuss the importance of health and breakfast and also good nutrition. On 3/27, March 27th, at the Tewksbury Public Library, from 7:00 to 8:30, they're having, excuse me, nutrition seminar and ideas on ways you can reduce arthritis symptoms through positive nutrition. So once again, that's March 27th. It's free. It's at the library, the public library, at 7:00. And finally, the bike rodeo, which we have here annually, will be held on June 3rd, right here at the high school. And the next meeting for wellness is on May 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. A lot of great things going on. It's great. Okay, we have no policies this evening. We do have a future policy meeting scheduled, so there'll be some on future agendas. Moving right into old business, we've already done the vote for the Global Commency, so we'll move right over to number two, the sale of Illegacy Pathway and Program Awards. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? I know it was in our packets. It was really informational-only. I think I asked that earlier, no one said no. We just want to double-check. Wonderful. Moving right along, so we'll go into new business, and I'll send that over to you, Mr. Malone, for the acceptance of the $500 donation from the ExxonMobil Education Alliance to the Heathbrook School. We could just look for a vote on that, actually. I mean, there's really not much to say, other than, again, it goes to show how generous, right, our community is in the partnerships that we have with all of our schools, and this is wonderful. This is actually a program going to the Heathbrook School.
And it's a great opportunity, Madam Chair, because it is the element of the small businesses seeking us out, which is so important. Obviously, we try to do all our due diligence on fundraising and grants and all those kinds of things, but when we have small businesses in the town that actually seek us out to support us, it's extremely important to us. So it's these type things that make this thing.
Wonderful. So we should do a motion, yes?
I was also going to suggest that we send a thank you, I assume it's to the Elks Fuel in Tewksbury, thanking them for putting us in for the nomination as well. But I will make a motion to accept the $500 from ExxonMobil.
I'll second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept the $500 from the ExxonMobil Education Alliance program to the Heathbrook School. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, thank you, and we couldn't do it with all the support that we get. Next on the agenda is the Day on the Hill. We already discussed that. Mr. Malone has already followed up with Mrs. Vogel. We're going to try to expand that this year. So if any students are watching, or family members are watching, your students are interested in politics or going to Day on the Hill, certainly let Mrs. Vogel know that. They always have a good turnout, so that would be great. And then, any school committee members that are interested and that have the availability, if you could please just let me know, so we'll get a list going, so we can let them know who will be attending that day. That would be great. And we'll go right to school committee matters of interest. We'll start with you this evening, Mrs. Bennett.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Cutlass?
I'll second.
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
One quick thing, very important. April 7th is voting day here in the town of Tewksbury. As we heard earlier, we had a student-driven activity here. Hopefully, we can get the message out that we shouldn't have to wait till something awful happens and realize just how important it is that we have the right in this country to get out and vote. Very important, you know, that has such an impact and an influence on your day-to-day things, your taxes, your tax rate, you know, the quality of your school system, your public services. So I can't reiterate enough, you know, regardless of what your political beliefs are, please, please try to get out there on April 7th and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And on that note, I was going to say, for those people that aren't aware, Mr. Cutlass and Mr. Francis are up for reelection, and they are unopposed. So that's a great tribute to you, Mr. Cutlass, and I'd say the same to Mr. Francis, that vote of confidence in the public, that you are unopposed, so keep up the great work.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we look forward to Election Day. Okay, future school committee meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 11th, 2018. That will be where we have our reorganization meeting that we have after every election, followed by a regularly-scheduled meeting that will start at 7:15 p.m. Are there any future agenda items anyone would like to bring up at this time? Not seeing any, as always. You can certainly reach out to myself or Mr. Malone at any given time to put those on. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We'll see everybody on the 11th, and have a wonderful night. Thank you.